I would like to call on Councilman Tim Carroll to lead us in prayer that if everybody would follow with... ...revenge.
Goodness, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we come to unite and thank you once again for all the blessings that you give to each and every one of us in our great city. Be with all those that need you most, be especially with all of our first responders and our men and women in the military. Keep them safe, keep their families safe. We ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna start out with some words and presentations, special recognition. If I could ask that Dr. David Nelson, Valdosta State University, please join me at the front.
Your's got on spec. But even without a voice, we are gonna land a script for you. City Valdosta is delighted to announce a special presentation of the Valdosta City University Social Media Awards, recognizing outstanding achievements of students who contribute to social media advice. Thanks Professor David Nelson, Dr. David Nelson, the students have demonstrated exceptional creativity and innovation and collaboration with our public information. Our Nelsons have assisted in fruitful partnership with our PI, our consulting, valuable academic assignments, and masterful ideas for our city. These assignments are on the serve as an educational endeavor for the students but also provide a real life learning experience to improve professional growth during the fall 2023 semester. The social media ideas are insightful ideas for engaging citizens through social media as well as proposing innovative strategies for enhancing our online presence when it came to promoting and educating residents on SPOS and T-SPOS. T-SPOS, in version of the city's current social media platforms, the students diligently crafted realistic social media plans, which formed as of this past year, was how to engage your friends, educating the most lost and T-SPOS and social media channels. All the rigors about invention by the PI though, the Woody Roof, which consisted of Thaddeus Mahi, and Van Wallace, Thaddeus Stanley, and Genesis Collins, who selected their outstanding presentation on social media management and animal ethics. The Woody proposal should get effective goals and activities and comprehensive analytic tracking alongside targeted strategies for engaging younger demographics, particularly those college students at the district. The ongoing partnership with U.S. City's education to provide practical experience for our U.S. students, engage candidates, consider the local government. So I and the city council extend our long gratulations to the winners of this social media project and given all students the creative contribution they will do, because thank you very much.
I have four orders, I'll make sure you're on two. Let's get these. Second today. Hold it, hold it open. I should let you go, baby.
Genesis, I'm heavy from on this side. Come right here. Make sure on the other side.
Yep. Definitely.
One, two. Just another figure.
Alright.
One, two.
Fuckin' get Larry Ogden to join me at the front. I could get Albert Anderson to follow him up. And Dan Robinson is not here?
Not at the moment.
At the moment?
Yes, we told him, but I guess he's running late.
How you doin', son?
We love honoring the outstanding work our boys do, and I'm gonna let Larry tell us a story.
Okay. Good evening. Tonight, I would like to recognize Albert Anderson. Albert started his career originally in Parks and Recs, and he was promoted to the Storm Ward Division, and after that, he was promoted over to the Public Works Division. On the morning of December the 5th, Albert was in his office working, preparing the work orders and the ride assignments for the men and women of staff. When Dan Anderson ran in and said, "Ab... ............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ Hello, I'm Stacy Denmark. I'm the owner. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions for...
Say your name again, ma'am.
Stacy Denmark.
Oh, Stacy.
Yes, ma'am.
You can teach a class now on how to go through the rezoning and permits phase and all that.
Yeah, I've learned a lot.
No questions for her? Good luck.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, it's councils for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Second. Have a motion in a second? All in favor, show of hands? Congratulations. Thank you, counsel. Move on to item C, consideration of an ordinance to rezone 1.94 acres from single-family residential to community commercial, as requested by Richard Hill. Matt Martin will again present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor. This one's not a conditional use, but a zoning of four parcels. It totaled just a little less than two acres of land, and it is to rezone from single-family residential R-10 to community commercial CC. As you see on the zoning map, this is part of a much broader area of R-10 zoning to the south. That is a former semi-real neighborhood from yesteryear. This was a county island that we had annexed back in 2006, and they had R-10 zoning in the county. We gave it R-10 zoning in the city. But you see the development pattern that has progressed is River Street is becoming a commercial quarter. You see the CH zoning that's all around, up and down river. This is in that broader area bounded by River, Norman Drive, St. Augustine, and Hill Avenue, which is why the character area for this entire area is community activity center. It calls for more intensive zoning and land use pattern eventually. And the R-10 zoning is what we call noncompliant. It is simply not dense enough for this character area, which means any zoning changes need to kind of go up the ladder in intensity. So the applicant is proposing to put commercial zoning on the street corner. It is speculative. There's a site plan in your packet to show how it could be developed, which I think is a very good conceptual design of what ought to go there. And that's discussed in the packet. Staff is hopeful that this might become a catalyst for some organizational development of the area. There just hasn't been much going on here in 30 years, so perhaps this might be a good catalyst. The land use pattern is not all residential like it shows. There's RV park and mobile home park across the street, and some vacant properties within proximity. So it is kind of a mixed pattern, but again, has been in place for many, many years, needing of something to get it going. In our image, you kind of see the rooftops of houses, lots of trees in the area to the south. You see the commercial uses to the north of River, as well as those on the left side of the screen, which are properties that face Enterprise Drive, which is all commercial office park. They have their survey showing the four parcels. There's three existing homes there. One's sold, and it is believed those would probably be demolished. And then the whole property redeveloped into some type of office or commercial village that such as this. CC zoning allows for offices or like commercial or even multifamily, so a very good zoning to have and which to market the property. Such a property, you see the existing homes as viewed in this case from River Street and Nan Street. And those are the three houses, and then the views up and down river, which is a very much different looking street, looking westward Norman, back to the eastward St. Augustine. You see a little bit of the mobile home park there on the right, some of the commercial uses on the left side of the road, another view of the mobile homes, and there's RVs behind diagonally down Nan Street toward the back. And this is from in front of the property, looking northward up Nan Street. With all of that, county commission reviewed the rezoning at their meeting on January 29th, consistent with the comprehensive plan. This stands for exercise of zoning power, which are there in your packet, and they're recommending approval of the rezoning to CC for all of the property. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Matt?
Matt, do you have any idea what they're planning on doing with that?
It's just marketing. The family that owns it has a lot of members, that they collectively own these four parcels, and they're wanting to clear the estate and I think just dispense with the property and market it. They don't see it being very marketable as R-10 for single-family homes fronting River Street, so they think a CC zoning would become much more marketable. There's no specific use, but as a demonstration of what 1.94 acres could contain, the applicant sketched out this site plan relatively to scale, but to show a collection of three buildings with shared parking, access points where they need to be, and an approximation of what could very well be built there.
Any other questions for Matt? I kind of thought the dentist's office would spur some activities, but it's been quiet for quite a while.
It's been quiet through there, but the growth around it, redevelopment on St. Augustine, continued growth on Norman.
Yeah.
The growth pressures are ever-present.
Good. Any other questions? Matt, thank you. So our final public hearing item, is there anybody who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm Richard Hill, and I reside at 2419 South 40th Road, Valdosta. When I approached zoning administration, we were convinced that we should have a CH zoning, because the property is surrounded on three sides by CH, Highway Commercial. Eighty feet to the north is Highway Commercial, automobile repair shops. I don't know if you've ever by and looked at it, but there's a number of CH zoning classifications to the north, not just unused property. To the west, 100 feet through a wooded lot is CH. To the east, about 360 feet is CH across the mobile home park. To the south is a vacant lot. The house, the property is surrounded either by mobile homes, commercial, highway commercial, or vacant property. This is an island that was annexed into the city, and the reason for annexation is for improvement, and we feel a CC for the total property is an improvement. The design that we did as an architect, I felt like this was probably the best use for the property other than possibly a complete, a condo project. We've turned, and in the design, we've oriented everything to River Street. We've turned our back on the vacant lots. The parking is all towards River Street. Everything is oriented towards River Street, and that's where the automobile county is for the CH zoning. But we were convinced by staff that we would be appropriate to request a CC because of the differences between CH and CC. And we hope that you grant our request for a complete CC on all of the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions for Richard?
Well, I think it should be noted that if I'm not aware of it, but Richard Hill used to be a member of this board, this council. He used to be a councilman. Yeah. He and then councilman Ron Borders were the two guys that got me started in public service.
We appreciate you doing what you do.
Thank you.
Richard's left his mark all over this town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, council, once again, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second. Have a motion in a second? All in favor, show of hands? Counsel, thank you. Motion carries. Richard, good luck. Move on to item five, ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of ordinance to amend the ordinance for the promotional process at the Valdosta Police Department. Our fantastic chief, Leslie Mannion, will present.
Get it down to my level, sorry. Thank you, ma'am, council, the city manager. As we discussed Tuesday night, our department has an internal promotion process that's been extremely successful over the years. We've been doing it for 27 years that way, but we need to make a couple amendments just to catch up with the 27 years of growth that our department has had. And the process that we're currently using in the 27 years, we've only had one grievance filed on it, so we know the process is working. So currently, we're following ordinance 9720, which was signed by Mayor Ray Motta in 1997, and searching through, we haven't been able to find it in the ordinance book. And most agencies, as we talked about Tuesday night, if they have a promotional process, they usually have it in a policies or procedures manual. So anyway, our command staff has discussed changing, not changing the process, but we would just like to amend some of what the process is. And what we have currently is we have two different sides to it. We have a competitive and a noncompetitive type of promotional process. In a noncompetitive, I'm sorry, in a competitive, prior to, you have to get a book, you have to study, and in writing, it was 30 days. The only amendment we're wanting to make to that part is to give our officers and our candidates 60 days at a minimum to be able to study. So that's all we're trying to do, is just increase the amount of time that they can study before they take the test. Also, in 1997, they put in a noncompetitive process. That's for our commanders, captains, our training unit, and our crime scene supervisor. Training unit and crime scene supervisor, because they were considered specialized units due to the nature of those positions. But since that time, our department has truly grown, so we've got more specialized areas based off of what you have to do in those units as well. So what we're wanting to add to the noncompetitive as well is our information technology area, our professional standards, and our K-9 unit. You've got, to be a supervisor in one of those positions, you've got to have experience, knowledge, and a lot more training than you do to just to be a supervisor in another area. And we don't want somebody to take a position just because they're promoted when they don't have the experience or the knowledge, and that's going to set them up for failure, which can end it in their career or hurt our department as well. So that's why we're wanting to put that into the noncompetitive area. So those are the only major changes that we're wanting to amend to the current process. And I thank you for your consideration.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the chief? Chief, thank you. Council, once again, it's yours for action.
Mayor, the, um, I think everyone on council now has had ample opportunity to, uh, look over this amendment. I, I know Councilman McIntyre's provided some comments, and chief has since responded to those comments, and that we don't have any issues with a change in the procedures and policy of this request. However, as I brought out Tuesday regarding it being in an ordinance form, thus making it very cumbersome, um, that I would like to go forth and make a motion that we abolish ordinance number 9720 and allow the chief and our city manager to, to make necessary changes to the policy and procedures as outlined.
Do you have a motion before us? Do I have a second? Second. I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Yes.
Just to be.
Got some questions there?
Uh, just to be clear, um, changes will come before the council prior to implementation, correct?
I don't believe so, no. It could be discussed with you if you reach out to the, reach out to the assistant city manager or city manager. But again, that would be putting you in the weeds of procedural policy. You can stop anything you want if you think there's practices going on. Four of you can stop anything you want, but I don't think you want into a manual that thick for every change.
Right.
In every department. And again, I'm going to go with you guys on this, but this, that's just my, my gut on that.
Members of council have always been able, I mean, if you wanted to call up chief and say, hey, I want to know how you.
Yep.
Handle this type of situation, I'll email you the policy and procedure on that.
Four of you don't like it, it's, it's.
Yeah. We always have the ability to provide input and comments on any policy and procedure.
My concern is that we won't have the ability to comment until after something is already implemented.
True.
I'd like to know about it before it's implemented.
That's what the chief is asking for.
Fair enough. Sandra?
Well, my comment was mainly, I was just, uh, was wondering what, what's wrong with what the chief asked for. I think she came up and asked for one thing, and we're changing it to something else. She's changing her, the motion has been changed for something different from what the chief asked for. And I was just wondering, is that, should there be something different? What he's asking for is different from what the chief wants.
Yep. My only feedback on that is she'll put exactly what she wants into the policy as, as.
You saying it is what she was asking for? She's asking that we, yeah, I thought she asked that we amend what's there and let her change.
She wants us to amend the 9720. We're thinking policy at that level shouldn't come before us.
Amendment is different from abolishment, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking.
She'll, she'll go do exactly what she just stated in her, in her own policy manual. And then, and again, she said by Kalia certification standard, she has to have that exact, that exact policy in place. I'm willing, willing to discuss further. Andy, any other thoughts? Andy?
So, so basically what we're doing here is we're, we're, we're basically changing the policy or, or Councilman Carroll's asking for is to change it from a procedure to a policy, right? Or take out ordinance, right? So therefore, more of a policy than it is an ordinance, correct?
It's a procedure, yes.
Yeah.
Which, by the way.
So it's not changing, it's not changing what she's asking for.
No.
She's getting what she wants.
She gets what she wants. But, but I think we all need to understand, um, we probably have less than 1% of policies and procedures in the, in the city of Valdosta that are in ordinance form.
Right.
It just seems silly to keep this one in ordinance form when there's, you know, and again, you can go look at any department's policies and procedures. It's just the, the idea of it being cumbersome embedded within an ordinance form.
Right.
Ms. Dooley?
I just think we should take these two separate things. When we, we're respectful of what our chief came and asked us for rather than change what she wants, which she did ask for an amendment, and you're saying you want it to be an abolishment.
We're just abolishing the ordinance. We're not abolishing a procedure and policy.
Well, the reason I say that is right now, that's two, that's two different things. We could come up with a, talk about changing and abolishing our ordinance or procedure for doing that at another time. This is not, to me, it's not what she asked for. And as you can see, it's causing a lot of discussion that we need more time to discuss rather than now. But I think what we should do is be respectful of what she asked for and amend the amendment because this same guy could come up more than one, again, somebody with another ordinance, and they ask for amendment, and one of the councilmen will say, I just want to abolish it for some reason. Let's respect this, take what you, what you asked for, what you want, and just take this at another time and discuss it. I mean, I think that's just fair. To me, it's different. The abolishment and the amendment, you, you're saying you're now wanting, no longer just wanting to amend for the, for the, uh, staff or the department heads to come up and ask for an amendment. You're saying, you know, should come up and ask for a change of the, uh.
Ms. Dooley, I think you've made it perfectly clear.
Okay.
You've done very well to describe that. Is there any other comments from the council? All right, we have a motion and a second before us. All in favor, show of hands. All in opposition, same sign. Motion denied. Do we need to go further to get her for 9720? I'll entertain another motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the presentation as our chief presented.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further comments on that motion? All in favor, show of hands. All in opposition, same sign. Motion carries. Chief, you have your changes. Thank you. Item D.
Sorry, chief.
Consideration of a request from the Valdosta Lowns Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a contract from the Georgia Department of Transportation to proceed with construction of our new air traffic control tower. Richard Hardy, our city manager, will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The, the Valdosta Lowns County Airport Authority wishes to proceed with the construction of a new air traffic control tower at the Valdosta Regional Airport. There are multiple, uh, funding sources for the tower, including the Transportation Investment Act funds, the Federal Aviation Administration funds, and the Georgia Department of Transportation, Aviation funds. There will be no cost, uh, no allocation of funds that will be required for the city for this project. Uh, GDOC is preparing a contract for limited participation, not to exceed the amount of $500,000. The contract will be delivered to City Hall and must be executed in an expeditious manner and returned to GDOC. A resolution has been prepared authorizing Mayor Scott Matheson to accept the contract in order to process this document. Prepared to answer any questions?
Council, any questions for your city manager? It's a long time coming. All right, council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this request presented by our city manager. He's going to sign off, or do you want me to help him?
Second. Just for clarification that I'll sign off. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Motion carries. Move on to item six, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Consideration of bids to purchase new body armor for the tactical operations unit. Our chief returns to the microphone.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council. Um, again, like I talked about Tuesday night, this is kind of feels like a deja vu except for Councilman Harden. This is new for you, so that's why we kind of waited just for, for your opinion on this. But in October of 2023, uh, you all, I came before you all, and you approved us to purchase new, uh, body armor for our tactical operations unit. It's a higher level of protection due to the nature of what they're called mass to do. So, and the current body armor that they were wearing expired at the end of 2023. So you all were gracious and allowed us to go ahead and move forward with the purchase from Verco Materials, and we talked about it, it was going to be a really neat body armor, something new. Well, when they came to measure our guys in November, uh-oh, they're not NIJ compliant. So not meeting those standards means we cannot use that, that gear. They said that they could, within the year, have that done. We just can't wait. We need to go ahead and move forward since the current body armor has expired. So we got three quotes again, and we're asking to go with Samana Police Distributors and the amount of $50,790. Um, in the FY24 budget, council approved 62,000, so we're coming in under budget. We had already met with Samana distributors, talked with them, um, and have confirmed they are NIJ compliant. If approved tonight and moving forward, we could have them in a couple weeks.
Council, any questions for the chief? Chief, with that non-compliant armor, we were actually going to have you with them on the outsides of your uniform. You were so cool looking.
They were really cool looking. They were. Thank you.
Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve this request by our chief.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Thank you, council. Move on to item B, consideration of a request to approve the professional design services agreement for utility extension project in northeast Valdosta. Ben O'Dowd, our city engineer, he's had a busy day today.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Never too busy for y'all. Uh, I'm presenting on a proposal that we've received from Innovate Engineering, uh, for the design of utilities to provide service to the outer inner perimeter between roughly J.C. Shack Road and a little bit beyond the intersection of Park and Inner Perimeter. Um, these utilities improvements are in alignment with the city's utility master planning goals and objectives. Uh, and this proposal is for design services to design those improvements. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the contract agreement in the amount of $7,574. Any questions?
Council, any questions, Ben?
No questions.
I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a que, um, on Park Avenue, where, where did, get rid of, do this, um, new subdivision area, is it, is it going to cover out there?
The intent is, the intent is to serve that area with these design improvements. Yes, sir. I've included a rough, um, just as a reminder, I included a rough kind of layout map of the served area. Um, and if you see there, that entire, to the east, south of the Methodist home there, across the street, that wooded, that densely wooded area there, uh, you'll recognize it from a recent rezoning, um, but that area is proposed to be included as part of the service area for these utility improvements.
We're not going to recognize that area in five years?
Uh, I don't know if I'm going to recognize a lot of these areas in five years. There's a lot of interest in development out here.
Council, any further questions for Ben? Ben, thank you.
Yeah.
Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve this request presented by Mr. Ben.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Ben, thank you. Item C, consideration of a request to award a new banking contract for the city of Valdosta. Chuck Dickens, our finance director, to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as we discussed Tuesday, this is a proposal to award a banking contract, uh, for the city's banking services. Uh, an ROP was distributed to banking institutions in Valdosta. The city received four responses. Uh, these responses were scored by a committee consisting of Councilman Tim Carroll, the city manager, the assistant city manager, the finance director, and the accounting manager. Uh, the RP's were scored on a variety of criteria, and while the scores were relatively close, Bank of America was scored the highest, and we are already amending that the city award a contract to Bank of America for banking services for the city. Uh, we happy to take any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for Chuck?
No. I, I was listening, and I thought he said the county manager. He said accounting. Accounting, I guess, ma'am.
That would have been an odd collateral.
I was wondering, okay.
Any other questions? Chuck, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, yours for action.
May I make a motion to approve the request as presented?
You should. Motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Chuck, thank you. Local funding and requests. Move on to consideration of requests to approve a cost sharing with a developer for a 12-inch PCC gravity sewer main. Ben O'Dowd turns to the mic.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. This request is for cost sharing in partnership with a local area developer for a new residential subdivision that's being constructed off of Park Avenue inside of an inner perimeter. So it's kind of in the same interest area, uh, but it's downstream of the improvements that we just discussed in my previous agenda item. Uh, the city's ordinance allows for financing of extensions generally to be shared between the developer and the city, where the city's master planning objectives require larger than, uh, specified utilities to serve that particular development. I've included that ordinance section in your agenda packet for your consideration. Uh, Park Lights is a new single-family, uh, single-family residential development. As I mentioned, um, as part of the development review process, we made the developer aware that a new 12-inch gravity sewer will be required to serve their development. Uh, the existing gravity sewer in place does not have adequate depth to serve and does not meet the city's master planning objectives, incorporating future flows to the northeast. Um, as a result, we developed a plan that eliminated, um, the originally proposed lift station, which Jason's staff and central maintenance were very thankful for. Um, it's always nice to serve something conventionally with gravity sewer rather than with an additional lift station. Um, attached are two cost proposals for the, uh, theoretical minimum requirement for the development, which is an eight-inch line, which would be the, uh, developer's responsibility for payment. And then we also got attached in your agenda packet, the proposal for the same installation along the same alignment before a 12-inch line. Uh, the city would be responsible for the cost share of $23,988.4, which is the differential between the two, if council approves this request. Uh, staff is recommending approval for the proposal for cost sharing, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Would this right here, um, instead of a lift station, would this eliminate the chance of overflow easier?
It would significantly reduce the chance of an overflow. There's still, um.
Nothing, we know nothing is 100%, but with.
Not that it's certain, but the benefit of conventional gravity sewer and the reason why we prefer it when we can get it, um, when it's feasible, is it runs on gravity, and gravity's not going anywhere. So, uh, you don't have to worry about power outages. Pretty much the only thing we have to worry about is physical blockages within the line. Um, so I hope that answers your question.
It is.
Great savings for us.
Any other questions, y'all?
No. Ben, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, it's yours for action.
May I make a motion to approve the proposal for cost sharing?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, show of hands. Fantastic. Ben, thank you. Way to get creative. Move on to item A, boards, commissions, authorities, and advisory committees. We'll start with the Central Valdosta Development Authority. There were two members, Edward Cochran and Michael Cooper, whose terms expired December 31st of 2023. Mr. Cochran and Mr. Cooper did not express an interest in being reappointed. Another member, Red Holmes, submitted his resignation in November of 2022. For expediency, we have two applicants that qualified, Stacy Denmark, owner and merchant Home Medical Services LLC, and Cassandra Hassanhour, owner of the Southern Cellar. It's my recommendation that council should proceed with those two appointments of Stacy Denmark and Cassandra Hassanhour into the, the two slots, since there's three open. There's not three qualified, just two qualified.
So do you have a fill in slot two?
And three.
And three.
Yep, I'm sorry. Slots two and three.
Would the mayor consider that we make Stacy Denmark move her in the one slot for the, um, the slot that was formerly being considered by Christie Moore?
With consideration.
So Stacy will be doing two? One and two?
No, she'll be doing one. Cassandra will do two. It will leave slot three open.
Is that an easier slot to fill?
It is a much easier slot to fill.
Well, ma'am, I, I think, I'm sorry, we, we kind of get an understanding of all these different positions and everything. I think we should kind of go with what you said with the two, you know, the ones that they are already applied for and have them put in those positions, uh, maybe table it until we can really get a better understanding of these, the positions that each one of them would be held.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman?
All right, um, Teresa, can you move up or slide it up a little bit, please?
Cause I'm still confused.
The other way, the other way. Thank you. All right, so slot one, you have to be an owner, right?
Yes.
Whereas in slot two, you have to be, uh, professional operator, officer, something that profession downtown, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess what Councilman Carroll was trying to do is, is make it available for.
One does qualify for one.
But make it available for slot three to be open for anyone such as, you don't have to be an owner.
Correct.
Does that make, you don't have to be an owner for that slot.
All right.
If you, if you all remember, Teresa sent that email out regarding all of this, and it was, she gave us three options, if my memory has it right, four options, and this was one of those four options for simplicity's sake, but, you know.
So let's give you option two and see if this is how you want it crafted. Council could move Stacy Denmark to slot one, officer at the time of appointment. Slot two, consider for Cassandra. Want to act on that one?
Right, right. I mean, that.
It's, it's yours for action.
Would you provide all the options, ma'am?
So the first one that I said, just slip two and three in. Second one, exactly as I just said, move Stacy Denmark up to slot one. Um, Cassandra Hassanhour would, would stay in slot three. Slot two is an easier one to fill and, and remains open. Option three, table the request. Option four, council could postpone the request for appointments to allow time for more discussion and more people to apply.
But that's that.
Two and three, let's take with it.
Okay, but I'm just going to ask, okay, that's why I said some of the questions. I was just trying to see that's that, since we had a question about the areas, you know, if we just go with two and three as it is, okay?
Yeah, two seems to satisfy everybody.
When do y'all make a motion?
I make a motion for option two and three.
Option two?
No, option, option one, I guess, since you read off four.
Y'all got Mr. Chris on the which we're going.
Leave slot one open. So basically, make a motion to fill slot two and three.
Hey, we have a motion before us. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? I know it's confusing.
Yes.
All in favor, show of hands.
I'm just, I was, I'm still confused.
So by that motion, we've nominated Stacy and Cassandra for slots two and three, respectively. Which means, which means that. That the slot one's open, but you have to be an owner in order to get that slot.
Yep, correct.
We were trying to make it to where you didn't have to be.
Correct.
Or an officer.
Yep. All right. Thank you to both ladies for their willingness to serve as well. Move on to the Valdosta Historic Preservation Commission. Um, they have three members, Dr. Charles Alex Alvarez, Sandy Burkett, and Celine Gladwin, whose terms will expire February 13th of 2024. Dr. Alva, Alvarez, Ms. Burkett, and Ms. Gladwin have all expressed an interest in being reappointed. Again, three appointments, three slots. Um, if I hear no objection by acclamation, I'll name all three.
Make it so.
It is so. Thank you. Move on to item C, consideration of an appointment to the Valdosta Lowns County Land Bank Authority. Uh, one term has expired. It's Burke Sherwood's, expired January 31st of 2024. He has expressed an interest, and once again, without objection, uh, I will reappoint by acclamation.
Make it so.
It is, it is so. Well, now move, close out that portion and move on to citizens to be heard.
Councilman Tim, let me hear what the mayor's saying, okay? So, I'm snorting, you know?
Like speed reading.[1736.33]